Recording. Take two. Good evening and welcome to tonight's budget work session for Monday, June fifth. We are continuing our FY twenty twenty four budget planning. At this time, we are now called to order. And we will turn the meeting over to Mr. Tenelli to continue the conversation as we walk through the line items and respective departments for the budget.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, Mayor Council. Um, back a couple, I guess it's a week and a half ago now. Um, I sent out the three sets of minutes just to uh just get everybody on board and everything. Previous discussions and but. If you don't want to go through that right now, since you're gonna wait until the Monday council meeting to approve all the minutes, I um, does everybody see this document? I just loaded up?
Yes.
Okay, good. This, this is a summary of the budget changes um through all the work sessions. Um, so you can see where we are right now and the budgets I sent out and also printed for everybody is inclusive of all these changes. Okay? Um, so well, we don't have to go through each one or anything, but um, you know, we just touch on some of the ones. Compensation, increased mayor and council, um, uh, did the college and vocational workshops, scholarships. Um, increase the salary for new town administrators, since that's in discussion or their views are still happening, not knowing where that's gonna fall. Transportation was still an open item, but we kept the funds in there still right now. Um, just, it's gonna take a little bit more just to get uh, we'd rather work with Colmore Manor to get full ridership detail and information and everything and um. And then we have to go back. I was taking a look at the ridership logs, you know, is there a way to consolidate or is there a way to? I can't say if they're, you know, if, you know, does, do we need all these rides or not? I, I'm not the one to answer that, you know, that I guess like, you know, um, we talked about a committee before, you know, I think that's something that would be. Um, I, I know Councilmember Brown is real expert on the transportation too, so I would defer really any, any questions there. I can just see the invoicing really, you know, I don't know, like the actual, you know, um. The trip details and everything besides rider logs, um. Uh, contractual, um, we bumped that up to um, a hundred thousand dollars, uh, just tried to cover everything. Um, that's listed there. Public safety, we made a change on the May one work session budget. Finally had a something go, you know, my way on a mistake, but I had two extra positions going there, so um, those reduced the budget. Positions along with associated benefits and just in case you all wanted to know, I mean, benefits for a police department run about forty five, for public safety, run about forty five percent. Just because of the um, um, uh, additional, you know, um. Uh, everything included, so um, that's why, you know, it's two hundred twenty seven thousand dollars. Um, some other increases. Capital, we increased because of higher costs of police vehicles down here. Uh, the, 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 the. Oh, public works, we added the equipment, okay, on the May first budget, but then a week later, we removed the crosswalk machine because we purchased that out this fiscal, this fiscal year. Excuse me. Um, and we also put in the federal earmark and also state bond funds. The May eighth work session, just to refresh everybody's memory, was really focused on um, ARPA. And also um, the things here, so we, we rolled over. The first three items, I'm sorry, first four items, we rolled over unspent funds from this fiscal year. Um, actually, I'm sorry, we, we, let me start over again. We put the food assistance back in twenty thousand dollars, okay, for next year's budget. The camera, the camera rebate has not gotten off the ground yet, so we went ahead and put that, rolled that back into next year, because that money has been unspent. Same with the business assistance, uh, we rolled back that back into next year. Actually, I gotta see this updated amount since May eighth, so this may change. Um, this may go down to four hundred eighty thousand, I believe, um, since May eighth, because it's, this is already a month old now, so. Community assistance, now, we did, uh, talk about five hundred thousand dollar placeholder. Um, just to cover if we want to do anything with mortgage assistance, rental assistance, utility assistance. That's why that is there. Um, not saying we gotta cut that up right now, but that's more just a placeholder. And we put the senior citizens project back in. There's also a discussion about the treasurer assistant, um, and honestly, having given this. The thought I showed that by now, um, just because, just trying to get through all this right now, um, how to structure that position. And actually, I have this doubled up here, so sorry about that. That's why I don't have a date there. I think, I think I put that down at the bottom and I moved it back up to the top, so ignore that, please. Then a shot spotter, the fifty thousand dollar annual contract, we moved that over to speed camera. And the last thing we talked about at the May eighth, uh, oh, this is at the now, that was at the, at the work session. Now, at the council meeting, we talked about the flood barrier project. So that went on with the ARPA funds and that's in our budget. Um, you'll see eight hundred thousand dollars in our budget for long-term capital projects. This includes a flood barrier project, okay, half a million dollars. The federal earmark, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, because, you know, you gotta show that we're spending some of that federal earmark, that million dollar federally earmark. And state bond funds for Boswick, again, that was half a million, and we're showing that we're spending a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, but this is offset by the revenues coming in, so this is money coming in, money going back out. Yes, it increases our budget, but it's offset by the. Revenues coming in for those projects as well. So if you, if you think about them, they're almost like dedicated grant funds, even though they're not grant funds, if that makes sense. So that's kind of summary, a quick ten-minute or seven-minute summary of the, all the changes. Uh, Ms. Rout?
Thank you so much, uh, Mr. Tenelli. Um, I wanted to ask where um. We had talked about streetlights, and I know we were saying highway user funds, um, but then we were also saying to pull. Some funds, um, I don't recall if we were gonna do ARPA or if we were gonna, with budget, public works, where does that fall?
Don't.
And, and speaking with, um, so I'm not sure if my recommendation, we don't know how much it's gonna cost. But um, in speaking with the gentleman from Pepco, not Mr. Tony, but the other gentleman. Um, he recommended that we take the lead, um, like Capitol Heights did, and hire a consultant. And the purpose of a consultant would be um, to really work with Pepco to assess the need. Um, like, we all know that we want LED light bulbs, but. There's many different types, you know, and a consultant would be more knowledgeable of um, the need. And would know like the temperature, the luminous, the light color. He was explaining to me, there's levels to. You know, just. Placing the light bulb per se, and, you know, I don't know if, you know, the town staff has that expertise, I'm not sure. Um, and then he also reminded me that Pepco is not in the business of selling light bulbs. Um, he was, because I was asking, well, why can't you just direct us, you know, like a person from your team? And basically what he shared was, they have, they do sell light bulbs. To, you know, as a replacement if we want to upgrade from what we have, but. They just rock, they just have one style of this or one style of that. It's not, they don't have a vast majority, and so. He was saying that other municipalities are looking, using ARPA funds and looking for um, like a consultant, so. I wanted to throw it out to my colleagues to see if that was something that we were interested in. Um, and possibly maybe using ARPA, since it's, it looks like it, it should be, hopefully, fingers crossed, right, a one-time, a one-time purchase. Like a one-time. I don't foresee after the, after we have the work from the consultant, I don't see us really needing to go back to this person, but maybe somebody sees different. Thank you.
Um, so Councilmember Rout, I may have missed it, because I know I had to go out of town for my job and also a funeral, so apologies if I haven't kept up with the emails, but I'm just trying to understand. With Pepco replacing the bulbs, the purpose of the consultant is to advise us on the most appropriate type to put throughout the community? And that would be the scope of their expertise?
No, Mayor, um, that's, that wouldn't be the scope, no, uh, my apologies, maybe I'm not explaining it right. It would be to assist with interpreting the data and surveying. And working with our staff to survey the town to say which we, which portion can we do in phases, right? He said this type of project to replace all the bulbs, that's, that's gonna be an expensive project. And he said, so we may want to do it in phases, um, which is, you know, like, the most dark areas or the most, you know. Areas that may need more attention because of safety concerns, and that person would be poised to make those recommendations to us. So, so to get the data from Pepco, because as I understand it, um, Pepco. Um, it's called a, a new application, a, a, a new business application, so they will send us data. How many poles we have, what type of light bulb we have to generate, you know, just a process. And then after that, it's, you know, us talking about purchasing and money and things like that. Now, there are some options that are coming down the road as far as. There's a tariff business that, there's a tariff situation that's out, where Pepco's going to be providing three different types of, they, they want to. They have to go before the public, Maryland Public Service Commission, they want to be able to offer municipalities three different options, which is to purchase a light, lease a light. Pay for it upfront, or lease a light, pay for it on the back. Um, and so, but it wouldn't be to guide us through that process, it would be just to guide. The council in making the best decision as, as far as a phase-in, phase-out approach, and then what style, what color, temperature of light bulb do we want? Um, do, you know, they have some LEDs that are like blue, or they have the LEDs that are just. Regular bright light, where we have the, we have, we have a soft, you know, like a golden light, you know, there's different types and styles. And then if we want to look at different pollings or options, what's the best, you know, Pepco can only give us basic information. Basic info, like, if you were to replace these many, this is what it would cost using these base bulbs. Um, so it would be more of like an assessment and then a recommendation.
Thank you for that. Mr. Charnovich?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, I'll, I'll, I'll try to be concise. Um, so I, I agree with Councilmember Rout. Uh, the, in fact, I've worked on this topic in two different states, uh, Pennsylvania and Maryland. Uh, in both cases, um, well, to be, go back, when I worked on it in Pennsylvania, um, we, I was part of a team that wrote a grant, in fact. To do a tiered approach for um, a, a multi-year program to um, go to LED street lighting. Uh, but a key part of that was the consultant, because as Councilmember Rout said, uh, they have knowledge in the, in the concept of, uh, you know, lumens and technical specs of it. Which most municipalities don't have in-house. So, um, and then when I was in Montgomery County, Maryland, uh, we, we also worked on it, in fact, with Pepco. Um, and this, this whole, this whole discussion's been taking place for years now about Pepco trying to get to the point of working with municipalities to uh, convert these, these streetlights over. So um, uh, to be concise, I, I just agree that the concept of the consultant is a good one, if, if the town of Bladensburg is gonna move forward with. Looking into uh, uh, replacing the, the, the current lights to LED for the environmental reasons and to save costs over time. There are a lot, a lot of factors to it, but um, the consultant approach is, 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 is a good one. I would, I would agree.
Thank you for that, Mr. Charnovich. Any other comments or questions from the council? I think my question would be, I heard, yes, it's expensive, but we need to really understand what do we mean by expensive, what kind of cost are we talking? Before we go down this road, understanding it would have to be a phased approach, because I hate for us to get out of the gate. Going down and then find out halfway through, we can't really afford it, so. Do you have, just from your background, um, on either Councilmember Rout or Mr. Charnovich, do you have just a rough idea of what it could cost for a town our size?
You wanna go first, Councilmember Rout? Or I'll go?
I was trying to find my, my cursor to come off mute. Um, so. I've been trying to research this magical question, like, I'm like, hey, we're in budget season, you know, I, I have to be able to bring back a number. So I was informed by the gentleman at Pepco that it's gonna be based, he can't estimate a dollar amount. Because there's so many variables, and what they can provide is how many poles we have, what they can provide are the ones that are, that maybe. The, the lights that are extremely outdated, they can provide that data, and we would turn that data over to a consultant, because a consultant may have. A connections or knows a light bulb company that we could use where we could get it cheaper versus. The temperature of a light bulb that we would get from Pepco, we may not even want that. He said, it's like shop, it's shopping. So there's many, is, so he, he didn't feel comfortable giving me a roundabout figure. He responded back and saying, let's count your polls. I did check with a neighboring municipality. Um, and speaking with the chief of police, um, over there in one of the port towns. He cho, he told me roughly, they spent about fifteen to eighteen hundred dollars on a light bulb, so. That was just a rough conversation, so, but that was on just one bulb for one area, but then he also said if you want to add a pole, that's a different cost, and. So we're not interested in poles, I don't think, just yet. We're interested in the light bulb.
That's still helpful. I know it's not, like you said, the price tag, but I appreciate that information, Councilmember Rout. Councilmember Brown, thank you for your patience while I was asking follow-ups.
Thank you, Amir. Um, and I'll, I'll, Mr. Vito, I'll check the, um, I'll look at the agenda again, because I'm just kind of like, do we have a, you know, a, are we timed in? In our budget meeting tonight, because what is this, this is five, five thirty, seven thirty, or seven?
So seven. Oh, Vito, you commuted.
It's five thirty to seven, it's kind of like, uh, we kept pretty much an open format, just to. You know, because this is kind of like a last time, or next to our last time, because we also have the.
Right, right.
Monday's meeting, so, um.
Now, do we have a hard stop at seven? So just, you know, just kind of being mindful in the topics, and I guess how long can we spend on each topic? Um, but. With the, um, and, 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 yeah, I, I think, I think bringing, like, you know, bringing, bringing all the facts to the table. And it's like, you know, just kind of, you know, you know, let's, let's just have the facts, it's gonna cost this, it's gonna cost this, it's gonna cost this, it's gonna take this, it's gonna take this level of effort. Um, because I've dealt with, it was, because what's interesting, interesting to me is that I've been dealt with Pepco before with, with, a-actually. We had a pole, the pole that's right there across that pedestrian bridge, the pole was there, but it didn't have the fixture, um, the, um, the, the neck. For the lighting, it, there, and they were like, wait, can't go there. And I said, well, why can't it? It has the pole and the other poles, everything. However, so. And what I'm understanding is that they, they put the, the neck there and the light, and made it a brighter light, and changed the light at the end of the street. Um, right there on, on Fifty Second and Newton, and Newton, so maybe I'm just may, so is this associated with a Pepco grant or something? Because I'm not understanding, I'm not understanding all of this conversation when, when they've done, and it's like, that's what they do, so it's kind of. Yeah, I'm just, they, they, Pepco has me kind of confused instead of all this information they're telling you, but. They've done this in the town before, so that's where, and maybe, um, maybe they're talking the total number. Of, 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 of poles, but um, it's like, yeah, so that's where I'm kind of. You know, ki- kind of confused with Pepco, it's like, and now we have to, to go and we have to purchase bulbs. For Pepco to, 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 to replace the, the lighting, then don't we pay Pepco? Don't, 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 everybody get a Pepco bill? And don't, doesn't the town get a Pepco bill? It's like, so that's, that's where, that's where I'm kind of. Confused about it. I don't know, maybe he needs to come to a meeting or something and, you know, kind of explain something, explain to us what he's talking about, because. I thought that's what Pepco did.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Brown. I totally understand. Mr. Charnovich, I saw your hand as well.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I, I was gonna, I, I was gonna attempt to. Answer the question that you briefly, maybe, that you briefly posed earlier, that maybe bring it together, so we could go to the, I guess, the next, next particular topic for the budget, but. So I think that, from my personal viewpoint, I think that at least for the next budget cycle, the council would be focusing on, um. Potentially putting funding in for the consultants, because that consultant is gonna woodwork, would work in tandem with Pepco. And these are, these are just fictitious numbers I'm gonna throw out there, but let's just say they said it would cost you one million dollars to replace. All of your streetlights with bulb X, right, uh, which is not gonna happen, because there's a lot of factors like Councilmember Rout said. Then you would, the, the council in the town would work with the consultant and say, you know, we can pay one million dollars to retrofit all these lights right now, which rarely happens. Or you can say, we want to replace over a four-year span, two hundred fifty thousand dollars per year to retrofit. Or you could say in two years, you would want to spend five hundred thousand dollars to reach your one million. Um, these are all, these are all fictitious numbers. It's probably, it's gonna be, likely probably be a lot more. But that's what this consultant would do, is the consultant would work in tandem with Pepco and the municipality, come up with all the, with this, with this plan. And then likely, you would probably see probably in your next budget cycle, you would, after working with the consultant for a period of time, you would say, oh, well, we can budget. X in FY twenty-five. I mean, if it, if it happens sooner, then you could just work through a budget amendment and all that, but. It, it, it's really, it really takes a lot of planning, is my point, um, if that makes sense.
Thank you, Mr. Charnovich. It definitely makes sense. I think the point that Councilmember Brown is making, though, is just the why and having Pepco, Pepco explained to us. Why this isn't included in what we're paying for already. Um, so I, I do think they owe us that much, you know, to come before the council and really lay. This out, so that we can just be better informed about.
I agree with that, too.
About that, and then, you know, agree on next steps, because I think there's no question, you know, Councilmember Rout made some very valid points. And so if we're going down this road, she laid out some good concepts for us to employ. Um, but they need to help us understand why this isn't included in the services that we're currently paying for. Because we're not the biggest town, but we do have a lot of light poles through Pepco throughout the community. And so there's a lot of money that is going to Pepco from the town of Bladensburg, so, um, and.
I would like an opportunity to respond, because I, I have a piece of information that may mix. Um, so Pepco, we do pay Pepco a bill, and we do, they, they do own the poles. But what we have is the base, they can't just come out and just replace the bulb, that's considered an upgrade, is how it's being. Um, how, how it's being communicated. Um, and so because it's an upgrade, there's a cost. So we have the base, we have the base luminous, we have the base type of bulb, but there are di- many different options to give us what we need. We may not have to add another light fixture onto a pole, we may just need to get a better lights. And getting a better lights, they're saying that they do not offer that option if we have a base option.
That was helpful. Thank you, Councilmember Rout. Um, Councilmember Brown, was your hand still up or? Was that another?
Uh, it, it was still up, and I'll just take what Councilmember Rout just said, because I'm still, you know, it's like, if it's a public safety, if they have, I don't know, if they have ARPA funding or some money for public safety, safety. Under Pepco, then why can't they pay for a brighter light? And, you know, do, do they have money within their budgets to do upgrades, because just like they had, you know, with the pole replacements and, and, and those types of things? Do they not have some budgetary funds to say, hey, these lights in this area, they're such as that, you know, they, they're twenty years old. You know, here's the bulb replacement plan, uh, or, or is that cost passed along to the municipalities and, and, and do they pass that cost along to, to county as well in the unincorporated areas? So that's, you know, just getting that understood.
Yeah, definitely understand and appreciate it. Thank you both. And then just while we're, um, providing Mr. Tenelli with questions, wanted to also just note a couple of things, Mr. Tenelli. So under town administrator, um, for the salary for the TA, um, we would need to bump that up. The council did agree to make an offer at a hundred and fifty K for, um, the candidate. That, um, we've made an offer to, and so that would need to be reflected here. And then my other question was. Councilmember Brown, please tell me if I'm wrong here, but I thought when we initially talked about the transportation for the bus, we had agreed, um. To consider looking into working with a local transportation company in Bladensburg to provide the services. Because I believe you made a really good point when we talked about it before, that we could actually create the schedule for the transportation, so that it's more concise. And every day someone's not running to Walmart and we're paying, you know, two hundred dollars, that's, I'm just throwing a number out there for that trip. But to be a little more strategic in how we lay it out, and I think you said maybe it's every other week. You know, that we have a schedule where it's the grocery store every other week, or the farmer's market, or whatever the case was. Versus continuing with the current transportation, uh, measure that we have in place. So again, I just, if I'm not remembering correctly, let me know, but I thought we had talked about just looking into another solution, just given the usage for the bus, the cost. The repairs, just all those things that we continue to see year after year, and just trying to save some money here, so I'm turning it over to you.
Yeah, we, we, we did, we did talk about it, and again, I haven't seen, um, the riders, ridership log, I haven't seen what we're paying now. And even if we did get us, get a person, how much would that bus or that, would it cost? I, I guess you have to weigh, weigh out the difference of how many people have been using it this far, since we decided, because. At the, this, this keep changing, so if you see my eyes moving, things changing, so I, I can, um, call and ask for the riders' log, because I don't think it's. That many people. Um, I know we talked about getting an Uber or something, I did Uber or, um, what's it, what's the other one, Lyft? They, I did talk to the residents, they're not for using that type of, um, car system, so, um, at the end of the day, um. We could check out the riders' log, because Vito, you said you don't have a copy of how many people.
Actually, I do, yeah. I, I have a, like a rough riders' log, it, it just tells me like the, um. Initials of the person riding and like where they're going on what day.
And so we don't have to decide.
Some days it says like nineteen participants to Walmart, our days is individually listed.
And so.
And they, they do rent the bus out for fifty dollars an hour.
Wow, I didn't know that.
Yeah, see, I, I, I don't know what the changes have been, but if you need to use the bus, it's fifty dollars an hour to use the bus. So I don't know how they doing it or how we deduct what we pay them, I don't know how their whole.
I don't know, honestly.
Councilmember Brown, I'm sorry, Blind and Mr. Tenelli, what I'm thinking is if you can get whatever the most. Councilmember Brown, I'm sorry, Blunt and Mr. Tenelli, what I'm thinking is if you can get whatever the most recent log is. That way we have the complete numbers for FY twenty-three. Because what we could do is not that we have to shut it off on July first, but the point I was trying to make is if we. Want to support a local business that's in Bladensburg, that's part of our core mission, supporting our local businesses. But if we work out a schedule with them so that we know if, whether it's two days a week, these are the runs that they're making. And we negotiate that it could save us in the long run because one, we're not hiring. An FTE or a consultant necessarily, or we're not purchasing a bus and having to deal with all the maintenance. We're just paying that flat. Fee and presumably if we're committing to that to say like twice a month or three times a month, there's negotiating power. In that to, um, be able to get more reasonable rates overall.
You have a bus company in mind that you say that's right in town?
There's a couple I can send over and just reach out and just ask them for proposals. So that you, you know, you and Mr. Tenelli can look at the information and then maybe bring it back to the council for a work session. But again, I'm not saying shut it down July first. I know we have to transition. So, um, just wanted to make sure that, you know, the team was open to still considering an alternative, you know, for the long term.
Okay. Cause it was, so you don't know right now what we paying for the whole year. Um, Vito, what did we pay for the whole year?
I'm looking up right now. Yeah. Once, I was trying to find a ridership log.
They just bought a brand new bus. I do know that.
Um, what we paid for the whole year is. One second.
So that we budgeted for forty-three thousand, but that's not to say what we paid though.
We paid forty-two thousand and that covers through March.
You pay how much?
Forty-two thousand.
So you all paid for the bus?
What do you mean?
I mean, cause they, they have a brand new bus and, and who use, who spent that kind of money in a year for? Going to Walmart or Giant? That doesn't even sound right.
We had thirty, yeah, we had thirty thousand dollars of expenses just in the first half of the year. So, um.
I, I can't see that. I, I honestly, something's not right.
And Councilmember Blunt, that's why I'm saying, I think, you know, we should just look at it and consider another, you know, alter. I can't even get it out. An alternate because it is very expensive to keep going.
They had, they had to buy, they had to purchase that, the, the bus because I can't see that much, but. It is, it's worth for me looking into, um, spending, even spending that money for one year. For residents going to Walmart and Giant. That's, that's unbelievable. I, I can't see it at all. That's too much money. We need, we need our money back.
All right. So Councilmember, uh, Brown, I saw your hand and then I'll go to.
Trying to find them.
Thanks, Mayor. I just, just really, really quickly. Yeah. And I think if we really look, look back, uh, over the years, it, it has been. It's been very expensive, um, to the town of Bladensburg for, for the level of service. And I think, and I'm just gonna be real quick, not to continue to belabor the point. But, uh, we just need to look at some alternative services. We're in twenty twenty-three now. And something that's gonna be more conducive. We can set up, uh, and we, and we. Have kind of survey our residency, what they want. They want Walmart, they want Target, what they want, you know, put together a schedule. And say, you know, here to some of the bus services or have them. Give us some recommenda- recommendations in terms of some bus services where they would like, you know, to go or whatever. And kind of plan, plan around that because yes, this, 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 this cost for this bus has always been, has always been expensive. That's because they're going, that's because they were going to far out. That's what that was. It's some, it's some kind of deal that we have and Mr. Tenelli, he can, you know, we can look at it. Some kind of. The struck, it was something that had to do with the structure of it that, um, here. Where. All of the municipality was paying for the bus and we use it the most. It has always been that way. And the trips that we were taking. They shouldn't have not been taken. So I think that's the best, that's, that's all it was. Yeah, I don't know, because this predates before you were on council. So. I, I started the bus with water. So I know. Yeah, but yeah, well, yeah, okay, we did, but, but yeah, before it, it has always been high. So for whatever the reason, it's too expensive.
Yeah, I agree with both of you. Councilmember Route, thank you for your patience.
Yeah, I just, I want us to recall, um, when we did review the contract. The only way out of the contract is to remove it out of the budget. So I want us to recall that. And I think we were here last year. And we didn't want to pull the rug. We didn't, because we wanted to. We, we wanted to keep this around and we said this, that would be the last year. So. I'm recommending. We gotta cut ties with this situation because it's going to continue to be expensive. And I think we should consider doing a private company. And just to get out of it too, cause we, that's the only way out.
Thank you for that, uh, reminder, Councilmember Route, cause you're right. We did have the same conversation previously. Um, and so, but I thought we either had to take it out of the budget or we had to provide X number of days. Notice like, what was it? Ninety days or something? One or the other?
Well, I don't. Yeah, cause every, when everybody pulled out and honestly, I thought we pulled out and they bought, purchased their bus, but still allowed us to do the service. I mean, I'm gonna use the service. I didn't know we were still paying that much money for the bus. As the last we, we spoke, but if we paid that money, did we not help pay for, pay for that bus? The, I mean, that you have to really look into, see what happened within this last year because it, what we were, was, we was supposed to pull it.
Right. So again, Mr. Snally, if you are able to go back to the documentation. Um, and determine whether or not we were assessed any sort of fees for the, the bus purchase and just let the council know. I know we're meeting next Monday, so it'd be helpful to have that information by then if possible.
I could share, I'm sorry, Mayor, I could share a screen real quick just so we can see it. Okay, here's what it looks like. Let me blow it up a little bit. Um. Anybody see where to blow it up? Can you all see it or is it small?
It's fine. I can see it.
Okay, um. Okay, so. This is what we're paying for, um. Salary and benefits, you know, Medicare and workers' comp, um. Operating costs, every gas. Maintenance miscellaneous breakdown, I think somewhere here. Uh, total cost. So you can see the van usage, um, were seventy-nine percent of the ridership. We had a hundred and fifty trips. In this quarter. Okay. Versus Cormor Manor only had forty-two, so twenty-one percent. Assume, assume their calculation is correct. Um, so Bladensburg. Is responsible for that seventy-nine percent of a total. Quarterly fee. Plus they charge ten percent administrative, which is their, um, the corporate dispatch services and billing and everything. So that's how we come up with that. Um. And as far as a ridership blog.
That must be right there when it says devise, but we actually paying for a salary. Looked like to me too.
Yes, we're paying for the. Up here.
And that's not new. Mr. Tenelli, I recall that's always been the case. It was shared. It's just now because all four point towns are not.
Not in it.
Encouraging. It hits us even more.
So we get a lion's share of it now. Yes, that's exactly it. That's a good way to put it.
Yeah, we need a private company.
Okay. So thank you, Councilmember Blunt. If you want, I'm happy to help with this too. And again, I'll send you, um. And Mr. Tenelli, the information for the local. Transportation companies and then also reach out to a few other towns to see, even if they're not in Bladensburg, Prince George's County. Um, just so we have, you know, three to five that we can consider. But I agree with you all. It's just, it's time. So. That, those were the two areas that I just, again, not trying to drag it out, but just wanted to make sure everyone was on the same page with. And then, um, and going back to our last budget conversation. Uh, that was part of the May, uh, council meeting. Councilmember Route and I had talked a little bit, uh, about the fact that we had spoken about. Uh, my interest in having, uh, a proposal to really service the unhoused population. I learned that's the term. Please don't say homeless. Um, so for residents without, you know, permanent shelter. Where's, we have seen an uptick in the number, um, when many of us purchased our homes or moved here. You did not see people panhandling or, um. Unhoused in the town. And so if I had to estimate, I would say consistently, we probably have ten to fifteen. But, you know, if we launch this program, we may find out there are more individuals. And so, um, what I sent over to the council to take a look at and if. Um, we can have it on the, the agenda next week for the work session and talk more. I just wanted to talk everyone through. The program focus. And so really in terms of short-term goals, the idea is to understand. Who these individuals are so we can better track them and perform wellness checks on them. Uh, and with support from our police department. And secondarily from that, uh, again, just noticing that we're seeing more of the panhandling, whether it's outside the seven elevens. Or at the Peace Cross intersection, there are several places in town. Where we're just seeing more of this activity. And frankly, it puts these individuals at risk. That is a huge safety. Concern because you don't know who's watching them to see them collecting money and could, you know, have ill intent. Um, as they're walking away with all this cash on them. So. Anyhow, the idea is to partner. With a couple of organizations and I'll talk through those in just a bit. But to have a cadence where we establish, whether it's weekly or every other week. That we obtain food donations of non-perishable items and bottled water from our local grocers. We package that, whether we allow students to help package that or, um, residents from the community. And that we work with the police department to go out and distribute those items. I've also gotten commitment from my dentist that they will donate, um. Dental hygiene equipment on a regular basis, so we don't have to incur a cost for those items either. And then I also had the opportunity to speak with the executive director for the neighborhood well. They currently are pretty much in the Hyattsville area, but their program consists of offering mobile showers. For those who are unhoused, they, um, are able to groom themselves using the sinks, you know, to shave and things like that. Um, I've also connected with the gentleman from the Bladensburg Barber School. Who even said that he could have his students shave the gentleman or offer haircut for free. As we get this off the ground. So there's just lots of people who want to help. And so the idea again would be to distribute non-perishable food items on a regular basis. And then in collaboration with the team here, determine if we do want to offer mobile showers, what that frequency would be. Um, there's no cost per se to have the mobile showers come out here. But the problem is, um, because of the toilets and the, the water after it's used for showering. And shaving or, you know, use in the sinks, there's a disposal fee that they have to pay. For about fifteen residents, it's a five hundred dollar fee because they have to remove the gray water. Which is different from removing the sewage and different, um, from, I think she called it the black water. And so again, um, the idea would just be to start. I'm not proposing we do this every single day, let alone every single week. But if we just wanted to try this as a pop-up. So partner with the neighborhood well, determine a day this summer where we want to. Try this out, um, whether it's at town hall. Behind one of the local shopping centers where we know these individuals gather. Or at one of our local churches or even the fire station. We can work with our partners, get a site confirmed, um, agree upon a day. And then just start assembling from there. But the reason I'm bringing this up in the budget season is not to ask for money. Um, for the food. As I said, I can get the, those things donated, but to help with that fee, that disposal fee. From the runoff water that would be incurred from the mobile, um, the mobile showers. So with that, just want to open it up for questions. And I see Councilmember Route has her hand up.
Uh, thank you, Mary James. I got, um, the opportunity to quickly review your proposal. Um, and I, um, I would like for you to explain to us the. Um, the litter pickup, which is what I am mostly interested in. Not that showers aren't important. Um, I think showering is important. Um. But I, I don't think that, um. Haven't, we, we would need to really be careful about a location. As it relates to what the location is, um. Similarly, because of the same reasons why we did not want, um, a shelter here. Um, so if we, if we, if the council does choose to do this program, I would recommend. Having the site be in our industrial area. Because it's away from families and houses, because oftentimes. People who are, um, housing insecure. That's the best practice term, um, as well. I think they're, you know, they use them the same. Um, oftentimes that individuals have, um, mental, a, a serious mental illness as well. Um, so we just want to make sure. The location is because if that's a safe place that they like to go back to. Um, oftentimes with, um, individuals diagnoses and. It, it'll bring them back to that spot, even though that that's not where the well is. Um, so I just want us to just be careful with that. But if you, the. I'm really interested in the litter pickup program, which. I'm like your number one fan for that one right now.
Sure. So I'll just, uh, uh, go ahead, Councilmember Brown, and then I'll move, um. Into the second part of it.
Um, yeah, thanks for that, uh, Councilmember Route and, um, Mary James. And, 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 and I do think with, yeah, because I mean. With both components, you know, with the, with the litter pickup, you know, yes, and then probably after the litter pickup, they will need to take a shower. You know, um, and, um, and then also, um, considering what Council Route just said, that, that is. Really, you know, taking that back into the consideration of location and, and I don't know, maybe the Salvation Army since, since. They, that's kind of part of their program and what they do. You know, though that may be a site for the, the water, I mean, for the shower. Um, component and, and who knows? And then even in that with the Salvation Army, maybe. That would open another avenue up to them going over to, into that salvation application. So that's.
Yeah, thank you both for those suggestions. And again, the idea would be that as we're going out. Um, to provide resources that, that we build their trust so that we could also incorporate resources from the county. And the state if necessary, but to provide them with help, at least for those who are looking for it and ready to receive it. To transition, but all great ideas. And then just in that vein of trying to build rapport, build respect and build trust with them. The other part of the concept is to really incentivize them away from behaviors where they're soliciting and panhandling for money. And offer to pay them basic minimum wage if we treat them like a, um. A, a wage, I'm sorry, a contractor, basically a ten ninety-nine, uh, contractor that we would. Just pay them in exchange for picking up, collecting trash, leaving it in a designated area, providing them with the pickers and the bags. To say, look, don't do that. We need your help here. And clearly you're a part of our community. So again, to make them feel good that they're helping us. Because oftentimes when you start to feel connected and that you have value, you start to behave a little bit differently. And start to care a little bit more about the area in which you live. So it's just a subtle way to open that door. But to also be respectful of the fact that we have, uh, people who have apartments and homes or businesses and shops in this community. And they don't want to see that sort of behavior in their community. And we want to pull. Individuals away from that because we want people to feel safe in the town of Bladensburg and not feel that this is a place where that sort of activity. Is not only tolerated, but encouraged. And so we want to help on both fronts for those who are unhoused, but also for. Uh, residents who are housed or have businesses here or bring their children to school here. So. Uh, that would be the other part of it. And again, just, you know, depending on. The structure, I would definitely want to. Make sure we're in line in terms of offering minimum wage. To be able to provide them with something in exchange. To be able to provide them with something in exchange for pushing them away from, um, from the panhandling type of behavior. And again, um, I talked with chief about this and Officer Stevenson, who's very passionate about helping. And is just like, say the word and I'm ready to help. So I think, you know, once we have general buy-in, we can flush this out a little bit more. And then also, um, with the adjustments that were recommended, um, maybe not able to do everything, but some like certainly. Considering Salvation Army as a site in that industrial area. And potentially opening up that partnership as a resource could really go a long way with some of the folks. That we want to, uh, pull into this program. Councilmember Brown?
Um, thanks, yeah, uh, yeah, and. And, 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 and I think especially for the, and just real quick, so we can move on for the, um, unhoused population as well, thinking. Or, uh, if them wanting maybe even finding shelter, you know, placement somewhere for them to. To, to, to find a, a residence, you know, so.
That's the goal. Yeah, that's the goal. But thank you all again, and, you know, I'll put. This on the work session, if you could add it, Mr. Tronavich. Again, I just wanted to open up the conversation, but just share ideas, um. Hope, let's make it better, so we can hit the ground rolling with a program that really is going to make a positive impact on this segment of our community. Um, and then, Mr. Tenelli, I know you walked us through. The balance of the adjustments from prior work sessions. Was there anything else we needed to go back to? I'm just trying to be mindful of the time, because I know some folks have a hard stop at seven.
We talked about some of the salary enhancements for the ARPA funds, um. I don't know if that's this budget year or next budget year, and also, um, anything else with salaries.
Yeah, thank you for that prompt. I do recall at the May work session, as we walked through the line items for ARPA. I did ask the council to consider, um, compensating the admin staff who's been processing. And, um, handling the customer service that goes along with processing of ARPA applications for. Uh, whether it was rental assistance, housing, utility or business assistance. Because that is time taken out of their day that they have to spend providing customer service. And we did put in about a hundred thousand dollars for a grant manager, which unfortunately, we haven't had any bites on that. Job announcement, and it's been out there for at least a year. So I wanted to propose, um, to the town council that we consider. Providing compensation to the staff. And again, it's just the front office staff, so we're talking about the four individuals who are managing this. But a twenty-five hundred dollar, um, amount of compensation. For the work that they've been putting in since we've started our, uh, relief programs, again, for housing. Uh, utility and business assistance. Any objections? So, Mr. Tenelli, if you could make that adjustment for us, please, and then, um. I want, I want to say there was an, oh, you're muted, sir, sorry.
Now, that'd be for next budget year or is that this current budget year? Because it's unused ARPA funds.
This current budget. Again, it's from the grant manager, um.
Correct.
Line item, which we haven't touched. And they're doing the work that we really wanted to have a grant manager, you know, facilitating and being responsible for. And then the other item was with respect to, um. Staff last year, I know we prioritized doing a little extra, well, significant extra. Um, for our public works and the police department as it related to, um. Salary increases. Um, and so, Mr. Tenelli, for this year, I believe there was. Conversation around trying to help for the non-sworn, um. Police side of the house and then our administrative. Who am I missing? Non-sworn, so that would be code enforcement dispatch on the police side, and then, um, staff on the admin. Side. So do you want to walk us through, uh, some of that, please?
Yes, that is the. On this again. Okay, that would be the. The, the four admin staff up here, um, in the front office. Um, that's strictly administrative and the non-law enforcement officers, which we call the non. LEOs and our public safety would include the code enforcement officer, two code enforcement officers. Code supervisor. Seven in dispatch and two police aides, which included chief assistant and the cat team leader. Um, so it's a total of nineteen employees that are the administrative and non. LEOs that were not affected by the thirty that received the salary improvements last year, which, which are the. Swarm, the twenty-four swarm police officers and the six public works. Actually only five, because there are six budgeted, but, um, there's only five public works employees, so, um. So twenty-nine received it last year, budgeted thirty, and, uh, this proposal would include the nineteen others.
And then chief, I'm sorry to break into your piggy bank, but. For the code enforcement staff as well as the dispatchers. Would you be comfortable pulling that from revenues from speed cameras? Because I do recall you mentioning, if we don't spend those funds down to a certain level, we actually have to give that money back to the state. And it also helps us out too, so we're not increasing. Uh, the operating budget experience, um, expenditures.
Uh, good afternoon, everyone. Yes, yes, ma'am, ma'am. I am definitely on board with that. And I think this is a great idea and a great incentive to show all our employees that we value their hard work and dedication. That they do every day. So I am perfectly, uh, fine. And on board with the fact for the public safety side of the house. And unfortunately, we will, I would like to pay for all of them. Fortunately, those ones can only be used for public safety side.
Thank you for that, chief, and definitely appreciate, um, the compromise there and just. Couldn't agree more with the hard working staff and think this will go a long way. It's better to retain good employees than ha- it's very expensive to have to rip. Place folks year after year. So I think this definitely helps bump up our retention plan for our staff. So appreciate all the support. Um, with, with that particular request. So, Mr. Tenelli, I believe we've covered everything as far as the changes. From the work sessions and I'm looking, I don't see, oh. I almost said I don't see any hands, and then I looked and I apologize, Councilmember.
I just threw it up.
Oh, I was like, I thought that was there for a while. I'm like, I know, I looked over there.
Well, just, just a quick question, and, um, the, um, you might already mentioned it, but the business, I mean, I'm sorry, the nonprofits. Are they gonna, do they get part of the op or are we gonna take that from somewhere else? I, I know we talked about it, but I wanted to know. When would that process take place for, um, the nonprofits?
Um, I have that under ARPA, and that is the, um, I mean, one second, Councilmember. Make sure I pull up the right.
Because I don't think it's an app, is it an application now for them to fill out? It is?
Um, for the nonprofits, um. I think we're doing, uh, RIPS, I, I think we're doing the same application as we are for the business assistants. Is that correct, RIPS? Yeah, and that's, and, and that's where I put the, um. I'm sorry, I can't, um. And that's where I have this here, the business and nonprofit assistants have the five hundred thousand dollar in there as a placeholder.
Okay, so, um, they could just go and fill out that application that's going there for businesses.
Yeah, thank you for that question. Councilmember Rout?
Thank you. I just want some clarity on what I need to bring back to the work session. Um, then am I asking Pepco to come, or are we? Um, are, are we comfortable with putting a consultant in there based off the recommendation from myself and Mr. Sharnovich? Or are we gonna do both? Like, what do you need from me? Um, because streetlights have been a little important. Um, and it's, it's, it's a health and a safety risk, um, for some of the residents. Um, who live and walk in the low lit areas. Like I said, there was a pedestrian that was struck, um, recently. And the driver was so apologetic because didn't, just didn't see the person. It was just really dark. I just wanted to know, what does the council need? So that I can try to get it done for you all.
Yeah, thank you for the question. If someone could come to the next work session, so we can. Have the opportunity to raise our questions to them and just hear the presentation. Um, just again, helping us understand the why when we haven't had to do this before. I think that would be helpful. And then also, um, Councilmember Rout, I think once we hear that. It may further support or stand up your request. We still, at that work session, can say. In light of what we heard tonight, we do understand better that we need this consultant, so let's add it before. The seven o'clock meeting where we move to adopt the, the budget. Mr. Tenelli would be able to make that amendment. Um, that same night before we have the final reading. So that was my understanding, but I don't want to speak for the group. Councilmember Brown, uh, McBride or Blunt, does that work? To get the presentation, so we all can have that sort of fact-finding information together and ask questions next week. Okay. Perfect.
Thank you for the clarity.
Absolutely, and thank you for being that contact to reach out to them. Definitely appreciate it.
And I'm an all ACC everybody, so I'll, um. I'll recent, I, I'mma add everybody, so y'all can see what I see.
Okay, yeah, that helps. Thank you. Mr. Tenelli, anything else for tonight?
Actually, Councilmember Rout, um, there was a small item, uh, last month, a couple months ago about the, uh, membership to NBC. LEO. Budget, but i- i- if you could just email me just an approximate, I think I have enough in there, just want to double check.
Okay, I'll contact NLC. I'll do that, send it to you.
NLC, not NBC, okay, I've heard that wrong.
No, no, it's the National League of Cities, that's NLC, and then NBC Leo, yeah.
So, Mr. Tenelli, within NLC, there's a variety of caucuses, and so this is.
I got you.
Black Caucus.
Okay, I got you. Just like with MML, they have the.
Exactly.
Okay.
So it's just another fee, I believe, for that membership under.
Okay, and Councilmember Bond, I just sent you the ridership logs for the last quarter. I'm trying to find them for, uh, the first half of the year as well.
Thank you.
And then I'll follow up with the transportation company, so we can try to get some numbers on that as well. So, looks like we have a few more pieces, but we're almost there.
We almost there, we almost done, and look, it's six thirty-eight, wow!
Look at that. So, thank you all so much for taking the time to do this. I know it feels like this is the fifty millionth budget meeting. But it's so important and, um, the, the conversation, the questions, just everything is so appreciated. And to Mr. Tenelli, thank you for guiding us through all of this. So we've come to the end of tonight's meeting. May I have a motion to adjourn? Moved by Councilmember Blunt, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember McBride. Any further comments or clarifications? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All in favor, let it be known by the saying goodbye. Any nays? The ayes have it, we're adjourned. Thank you all again so much for.
Good night.